Well, good evening, everyone. I'm gonna call meeting number 16 of the Westland City Council to order. We're gonna begin with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilwoman Andrea Rakowski.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. LeBlanc. Can you please call the roll call?
Councilman Gobow.
Present.
Councilman Hersberg.
Here.
Pro Tem Lando.
Present.
Councilman McDermott.
Here.
Councilwoman Rakowski.
Present.
Councilwoman Sampson.
Present.
President Hart is absent, excused. A quorum is present.
Thank you, Mr. LeBlanc. At this point, there are no presentations or announcements tonight, so we're just gonna move right on to questions or input on the agenda from the public. There are agendas in the hallway on the desk out there. This section will allow a person to be recognized only at the beginning of the meeting to address the council pertaining to items that are specifically on the business agenda. Questions asked may be responded to during the agenda item following a motion and support from the council. Is there anyone in the audience on my right that wishes to speak on items on the agenda? Anyone on the left wish to speak on items on the agenda? Last chance. Moving on to... We'll close, excuse me, we'll close items on the agenda from the public and move on to the consent calendar. Motion by Councilman Gobow, supported by Councilwoman Rakowski. Are there any changes to the consent calendar? Any changes to the consent calendar? Any discussion or input? Hearing and seeing none? Or, excuse me, any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing and seeing none? Unanimous rule will be attached.
Council has approved the following consent calendar items. Approval of request from the Westland Professional Firefighters, IAFF Local 1279, to collect funds via a "Fill the Boot" drive for MDA charity from August 26 through August 28, 2022, at the corner of Wayne and Ford Roads. Approval of annual watch guard firewall subscription through CDWG in the amount of $5,473.40. Approval of subscription renewal with Everbridge Nexo for alerting services utilized by the Department of Police and Public Service amount not to exceed $6,195.71. Introduction of ordinance 248A111, an ordinance to amend Chapter 27 of the Westland City Code by adding Article 6, Section 2735, to provide a limited opportunity to extend certain conditional marijuana business licenses. Introduction of ordinance 248A112, an ordinance to amend Chapter 27, Article 6 of the Westland City Code by adding Section 2736, to provide a limited opportunity to revive certain applications filed on or before July 16, 2020, and to increase the number of available marijuana co-located businesses. Adoption of prepared resolution authorizing the appropriation of American Rescue Plan Act funds for various improvements at the Senior Resource Center, including renovations and security camera upgrades. Amount of the appropriation is not to exceed $100,000. The last item approved on the consent calendar today, approval of quick claim deed which will serve as the official conveyance of Voss Park from Wayne County to the city of Westland. Moving next to payment of vouchers.
Sir, motion on the floor? Motion by Councilman Hersberg, supported by Councilwoman Sampson. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent on the item? Any dissent on the item? Hearing and seeing none? Unanimous rule will be attached.
Moving to new business, item one. Approval of minutes of the regular meeting held August 1, 2022.
There's a motion on the floor by Councilwoman Rakowski, supported by Councilman McDermott. We need to do a roll call on this one.
Councilman Gobow.
Yes.
Councilman Hersberg.
I'm staying in due absence.
Pro Tem Lando.
Yes.
Councilman McDermott.
Yes.
Councilwoman Rakowski.
Yes.
Councilwoman Sampson.
Yes.
President Hart is absent, excused. Motion passes. New business, item two. Approval of site plan and special land use for proposed marijuana co-located facility west of Newburgh on the north side of Cherry Hill. This is planning department number 1884B. Planning Commission recommends approval contingent upon departmental requirements and recommendations and subject to the conditions specified in the Planning Commission Findings and Recommendations Memo.
Jim, your mic's on. Oh, no, your mic was on for some reason. Motion by Councilman Gobow, supported by Councilwoman Rakowski. Mo?
Thank you. Good evening, City Council.
Sorry, Jim, I missed it.
The applicant here is seeking site plan and special land use approval for the construction of a marijuana co-located facility. This includes retail, grow, and processing operations. These three operations will be contained in separate buildings on-site. The 11-acre site outlined in yellow on your screen is located north on the north side of Cherry Hill between Newburgh and the railroad. The property is owned I-1 Light Industrial and is currently vacant. The general vicinity of this area is industrial in nature, with the exception of the properties to the north over here along Brandon, Florence, and Barbara. These properties are zoned R5 Single Family Residential. The 2018 master plan designates this property in the future land use map as industrial. Some site plan characteristics of the proposed plan are as follows. The site will have access via two curb cuts along Cherry Hill there, one on the east side and one on the west side. The site complies with the parking requirements for both the retail operation and also the industrial operations making up the processing and cultivation. 165 parking spaces are proposed in the parking lot there on your screen. Proposed landscaping is compliant with the zoning ordinance requirements. A tree permit will be required to remove any of the trees in the project area you see here on your screen. There is a proposed decorative masonry screening wall here in this area where my cursor is just to screen the parking lot from the Cherry Hill right-of-way. The proposed buildings will be constructed using a variety of high-quality materials, some metal paneling, wood siding, glass panels, and stone. The top is the retail facility, making up the dispensary, and the bottom are the industrial operations, the processing, and the cultivation, grow facilities. These three buildings comply with the bulk requirement of our zoning ordinance, the height, setbacks, lot coverage. The proposal also includes a stormwater detention basin here to the north side of the buildings. Site lighting is being provided as well in compliance with the one-foot candle maximum at the property line. And finally, something important to note, there's about a 720-foot setback from the rear of these buildings, rear wall of these buildings, all the way back to the property line to the north where these houses are adjacent to. All of this landscaping, mature, grown trees will remain in place, providing a buffer between these facilities and the residential. The residential owners were noticed during the planning commission meeting, which was held on August 3, and the planning commission is making a recommendation to approve, subject to a variety of conditions that the business owners are aware of, and I will read them on the record right now. Number one, required compliance with the city's tree ordinance. Number two, the facility must employ a facility-wide odor control plan designated for cultivation, a security plan which was submitted to the police department. Be complied with. The marijuana business shall enter into a legally binding community benefits agreement that has been executed and is in your backup. Continued compliance with all of the applicable local and state laws pertaining to marijuana. All signage and advertising shall comply with our zoning ordinance. And finally, the hours of operation to the public are limited between the hours of 10:00 a.m. and 9:00 p.m. The business owners are present and represented here, and I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thanks.
Thank you. If the petitioners are present, can you please approach the podium?
Good evening, Paul Weisberger, on behalf of the applicant.
Good evening. Do you have anything you want to add that Mr. Iub didn't cover?
No, not really. We're just excited to get this project going. The plans are ready to submit in the next couple of weeks, maybe next week, actually, and ready to get going.
Great. It looks like I have discussion. Councilman McDermott?
Good evening. First off, thank you for your investment here in our community. Really appreciate it. It's a significant investment there along Cherry Hill. Two questions for you. Number one, do you have a groundbreaking date as far as when you hope to break ground and start the construction, pull a building permit?
Yeah, we're looking to break ground. The short answer is as soon as possible, and that's really gonna be contingent upon tighter windows as to how long it'll take for the building permit to turn around our building permit plans. We did get our building permit plans from our architect two days ago. They're being reviewed, and then we hope to submit them probably Monday, Tuesday in that timeframe.
Wonderful. And then my second question, and I've asked this to the prior vendors who've come up here as well. Do you have a percentage of local employees that you're looking to hire and have ultimately staff, whether from Westland or at least, you know, the greater western Wayne County?
We have a number of facilities already open, and I would say our average local hire from the city proper is somewhere in the neighborhood of 75, 76 percent. And then from the immediate surrounding areas, it makes up the balance. But it's about 75 percent, and that's across three facilities, I'm sorry, five facilities that we have already.
Wonderful. Thank you for the investment. Nothing further.
Looks like Councilwoman Sampson, go ahead.
Thank you. Well, thank you for coming up here today, and thank you again for your investment. What is the square footage of your building? It looks like there's two buildings next to each other, so how much does that occupy?
We've got a 4,0950 square feet for the retail building, and then we have 11,600 square feet per grow and processing building that are side by side. So combined, that's 23,200 for the non-retail building.
Okay, and combined, okay. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or discussion from the council? Any other questions or discussion from council? I'll just briefly say thank you for the investment, sir. Thank you also for working with the planning commission. I was watching the meeting and saw they had some concerns with some parking, and you were quick to make that correction, so thank you so much for that. With that, is there any dissent on the motion? Any dissent on the motion? Hearing and seeing none? Unanimous rule will be attached. Congratulations, and good luck to you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
New business, item three. Approval of proposed land division 450 South Vinoy, south of Cherry Hill, between Vinoy and Farmington. This is Wayne Westland Community Schools, planning department number 1735A. Planning Commission recommends approval, and if approved, further directs the city attorney to draft the necessary land division resolution.
Motion on the floor by Councilman Hersberg, is there support?
Support.
Support by Councilman Gobow. Mo?
Thank you. The property here is located between Vinoy and Farmington Road. This is south of Cherry Hill. This property is zoned R5 Single Family Residential and is developed by a former school building that sits on the site, can kind of see it there with the black roof. The building is currently occupied by Step, who was leasing the building from the school district. Step uses the building to provide supported employment opportunities for individuals with disabilities. The school district is seeking approval to split the property into four parcels. Parcel A, the large yellow outlined parcel, will be purchased by Step to continue their employment program. And the three remaining parcels, which will have frontage along Farmington, if approved, will be retained by the school district for residential construction, for the residential construction program at the William D. Ford Career Technical Center. So all four of these proposed parcels comply with the minimum zoning requirements, and so will the existing building even after the split. There is a approximately seven-foot wide right-of-way dedication along parcels B, C, and D, those along Farmington, to provide a 60-foot even right-of-way for Farmington Road, which is a best practice for this segment of Farmington. The planning commission made a recommendation at its August 3 meeting, made a recommendation for approval, sorry, at its August 3 meeting. The school district is represented today, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Iub. Petitioner present, would you like to add anything?
Well, first of all, thanks for having me here tonight. As you know, Career Tech Building, we build homes with students. Eventually, these three parcels become homes with the Career Tech Center. We're looking forward to doing that, and we're also looking forward to selling the building to Step.
Great. Is there any questions from the council at all? Questions or input from the council at all? Councilwoman Rakowski.
Good evening. Thank you for being here with us this evening. I just wanted to express my support for this, not only Step, a wonderful program within our community. You can see their work with what they're doing with those individuals, almost anywhere you turn in the city, even right here at City Hall. And, you know, having three parcels available for our construction technology students to build homes is fantastic, so I'm in support of this. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Rakowski. Councilman McDermott?
I just wanted to say, this is my neighborhood and where I live, so I live around the Vo-Tech houses, and whether it's on Somerset or up on Avondale, you guys do a terrific job each and every year, so I think it's just such an asset for the kids in our community and the work you guys do at the William D. Ford Center to have this, and I'm privileged to, you know, live around and see the construction that's been going on in the houses the last couple of years over there on Somerset. So, great job, guys. I'll be in support of this. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman McDermott. I see the mayor wants to weigh in, but I'm gonna call on Councilwoman Sampson first, if that's okay? Councilwoman Sampson?
Yes, thank you. Thank you for being here as well, too. I have a special needs brother, so like anytime that Step can be supported in the community, I think it's great. And also in terms of the parcels that are being divided, do you have any idea on the homes that will be built there? What the timing is? Is it a project that they're gonna roll out next year, or are they gonna take their time with it?
We actually don't have a date yet. As long as the mayor keeps giving us refurb, so we'll keep doing that.
Okay.
But, yeah, it's when we run out of space, then we'll start building homes. I've been picking up lots all over the place to do that within the city, so I'd like to have 20, so they have 20 years of homes to build.
That's great, yeah. So, thank you so much. I definitely am in support of this as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion from council? If I go to the mayor? Go ahead, mayor?
Thank you, Council President Pro Tem. I just wanted to just take a real quick minute just to recognize Mr. Spiezak. He told me before the night that this was his first city council meeting since, like, 1978.
Wow.
That is true. We have copies of all the meetings at the library. I'd like to... But, Mr. Spiezak, with his role with the school district, has been our point person on the Marshall Project, and we appreciate all the efforts that they've put into helping us, and they're great partners, and we just wanted to recognize him. And if you recognize that name, his father's the, one of our anchorman on the planning commission. So, once again, just thank you for this project, but thank you for your continued partnership with the city and our other projects as well.
Briefly, Mr. LeBlanc asked if he could say something briefly as well, too.
I appreciate that, sir. Mr. Spiezak, I can't tell you how much help that you give us during election time, making certain that the buildings that the school district generously allows us to use are ready to go. So, I think it contributes to like what the mayor said and what some of the others have also commented, you know, the partnership between the schools and the cities is definitely good for all of us, and I just wanted to offer thanks again. We just had an election, and you helped us.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. LeBlanc. Any other discussion from council? Any other discussion from council? I'll just weigh in as well, and thank you for continuously bringing these projects to our community. It's a great program. I went to Wayne Westland Schools, I went to Vo-Tech. I wish I would've got into the construction and maintenance, but no, it's really a great program that you guys put on. The houses are incredible, so I'm looking forward to seeing these go up, and I'll be in support as well. Any dissent to the motion? Any dissent to the motion? Hearing and seeing none? Unanimous rule will be attached. Congratulations and best of luck.
Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we'll move on to public comment. Everyone speaking before the council shall do so in a civil manner. Speakers shall refrain from abusive or profane remarks, vulgar language, disruptive outbursts, threats, racial slurs, or other conduct that interferes with the business meeting. Personal attacks on council members, the administration, city staff, other speakers, or members of the public will not be tolerated. The clock will start upon the words, excuse me, the first words of the speaker and will not stop while the speaker is recognized from the floor. It is the speaker's option to ask questions at this time, and the person questioned may choose to respond during the speaker's allotment of time, however, the clock will not be stopped once it has started. The clock will continue to run until the speaker is completed or their speaking time is exhausted, or whichever is first. Anyone in the audience on the left that wishes to speak during public comment? Laurie's shaking her head no? Really? Anyone on the right wishes to speak during public? Yes, sir.
Of course, I wanna say something's been a while. It's been since July, my name is Ray, I took a little summer break, and I am back, and I cannot believe where your time is going, but I'm telling you something. I may not be here, but I'm other places, and I'm busy. I'm also with Crosspoint Church, Reach Out, I'm one of their messengers there, and I gave a couple cards to a couple of council people here today, and I'm gonna probably leave some up there. We're having, they're having a car show at Crosspoint. I think it's gonna be really good, and they're also going to have Open House, and it's going to be from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Last year I was there, I volunteered, helped out clean up and stuff, and two Westland police officers were there, helping out with that group, and the K9s were great. So, officers are always doing a good job out there, no matter where they are. But, anyway, I just wanna talk a little bit about that, a little bit about the church, and of course, this week I'm gonna be in Ann Arbor, talking about and my story and helping other people with different abilities live in the community. So, people are coming from nationwide. So, it's a general teaching conference, but I am definitely looking forward to it. The CEO's gonna be talking, I'm gonna be talking, and there's going to be some other presenters there. And I'm definitely looking forward to it. Also, this week is my birthday coming up on Sunday. I can't believe where the year went to. But I'm not saying we're going back in age here, but I love it. And I'm gonna keep driving the system, and I know Judy, a friend of mine up there in heaven, is definitely watching over me over here. And I'm definitely gonna be putting her picture up on Facebook, too. We don't forget our loved ones. So, definitely. And with my work and everything, and I'm also on another board now, just got a call on, and behavior health, I'm also the pastor of the mental health, which I go out and teach about mental health and how important it is, and we don't just do it for Mark. We do it every day, and it's very important, because we don't wanna get to a point where a person's in danger. So, we wanna prevent that from happening. So, I wanted to say thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else in the audience wish to speak during public comment? Going once? Going twice? We'll close public comment and move on to comments from the mayor.
City Council.
One second, mayor. Let me get you set up here. Go ahead.
Thank you, City Council. I'll keep it really short. There's been a lot of, a lot of good, fun stuff happening in the city since our last council meeting, and I appreciate those that helped out with the Blues Brews and Barbecue event, and we're gonna talk a little bit more about that at a future meeting and hand out some of the funds that we raised that night. But, council, I appreciate those of you that came out and participated. We appreciate those of you that have been coming to the ribbon cuttings for the new businesses. And also this morning, we broke ground on the new Westland Rotary K9 Corral Dog Park, which is gonna come to fruition here in the very near future. And the last thing is, Council President Pro Tem, you're probably gonna mention some upcoming study sessions, and there is a study session, an update from Poverty Waste on their sanitation. If you don't mind, we're gonna try to piggyback that night. We did receive the audit results from our recycling auditors that were going door-to-door, and Kyle's working with them on putting together a presentation, and if you don't mind, we'll try to just piggyback that night and cheer that information with the council. I think you're gonna, you're gonna be pleased when you see the results. Thank you.
Thank you, mayor. Anything for Mr. Fason, our attorney tonight?
I've been asked by one of your colleagues to give the long history of Scotland. So, the recorded history of Scotland, oh, wait, I'm sorry, this is the wrong group. He's not here. Nothing further.
Thank you, Mr. Fason. We'll go on to comments from the city council members. We'll start with Councilman McDermott.
Well, good evening. Thank you, Council President Pro Tem. First off, I wanna say thank you to everybody who came out and made Blues Brews and Barbecue a huge success, all the Westland residents, all the people from southeast Michigan who attended and really enjoyed themselves and made it such a huge success. But I wanna give a couple of specific shout-outs here to people. First off, our Westland DDA here, without our Downtown Development Authority, Blues Brews and Barbecue would not be possible each and every year. So, thank you to everybody on the DDA Board and Commission for really organizing this event and putting together another flawless, and I think even better, event this year because we had more food vendors, less lines that people were waiting in, and I think overall a more satisfied guest and customer base. So, thank you to the DDA. I wanna thank Kyle Mulligan, our Parks and Rec Director, and his team of park rangers who were doing a lot of the work ahead of time to break up, to sit down, as well as our DPW crew and Ramsey's team. All the tents that you saw getting put up, all the chairs that you saw that you were sitting in and enjoying the concerts at, that was thanks to DPW and thanks to Kyle and his team. So, thank you, guys, for running this event. Thanks to Vic Bauer, who wore 1,000 hats if he wore one, like always with every event. Vic was everywhere doing everything, so thank you to Vic for making yourself available. All of our vendors and sponsors who came out, we had tons of great food this year, tons of great stuff for kids and families, prize vendors, but the barbecue, as always, was fantastic. Had some new vendors out this year that was their first time coming, like hogs, so we're really excited to have them and hope to have them back next year. And then I wanna thank our PD and our fire department. This was an incredibly safe event. It was pretty much incident-free. You know, everybody really enjoyed themselves responsibly, even those that may have had a few drinks in them were very responsible. And not only thank you to everybody for enjoying themselves responsibly, but to the PD and the fire for making it such a safe event. We had the green jerseys everywhere, and so there was a police presence that everybody saw, and they were on their best behavior, and that's all thanks to them. And then I wanna thank my colleague, Councilwoman Rakowski, for running the competition event as well. Sounds like one of the biggest that we've had yet, and a very successful barbecue competition. Just a couple of other things real quick. Just a couple of other things real quick. Thank you to Joanne Campbell and everybody, well, Joanne's not here tonight, so no pointing over there, but thank you to Joanne and the entire Norway Citizens Council on a great back-to-school event. Myself and Council President Protam, Londo, were out there, it was a well-attended event, over 100 backpacks and school supplies given away to kids, so thank you to Christina and everybody on the Norway Citizens Council and Joanne for that. I wanna thank our city clerk and his entire elections team on running a flawless election, as always, they do a great job. Sometimes they're a little short-staffed, and it can be pretty hectic there at the polling locations, but as always, a wonderful job by Richard Shannon and the entire team for running a smooth election process. And then just two more things here real quick. Thanks to Ray for bringing up mental health again. For those of you who may be unaware, there is a new mental health hotline, it is 988. So, if you know someone experiencing a mental health emergency or is feeling suicidal, they can dial 988 as opposed to dialing the usual emergency line to get direct mental health access. And then the other thing I wanted to acknowledge tonight was the Stottlemyre Park Ceremony. We officially recognized and had an official ceremony for Stottlemyre Park and acknowledged the true history of the park down there in Annapolis Park, and I think it's important the plaque that went up over there at Stottlemyre Park reflect the true history of why people fought so hard for so long to get that park built for the citizens down there in Annapolis Park in the Carver subdivision, and it was a long time coming, even though the park's been built for a number of years, to be able to acknowledge why that park wasn't built, I think the discrimination that went into ultimately preventing that park for many years and being able to rectify a longstanding wrong in the community was nice to see. And with that, I hope that we can get moving forward here now that we're past the election, past the budget season, on some of the things that we've kicked around here on council, including the staffing study session, looking into a responsible contracting ordinance, a potential citywide tree planting program on all of our major streets and roadways, and maybe getting some more covered bus stations built, and adapting an Indigenous Peoples' Day resolution. And with that, I bid you all a good evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman McDermott. Councilwoman Murkowski?
Thank you, Council President Protam. Good evening, everyone. We'll try not to copy too many things, but it was wonderful to see so many people enjoying the Blues Brews and Barbecues, and I think every year, the fireworks and drone show is just gonna continue to become more and more awesome. The mayor had made mention of all the recent ribbon cuttings and businesses that are opening, and I apologize, I've been absent from a few full-time work, you know, takes me out of the city sometimes, but I do look forward to patronizing your businesses, and I just encourage everyone who's looking at Westland as a prospective place to do business that we are here, we are open, and we are ready for your business. Councilman McDermott made mention of the competition barbecue, and I appreciate that. Councilman, Council President, excuse me, Hart and I have worked on a project for a number of years, it started out when we were J.C.'s, and we're fortunate to have a landing spot at a local VFW 9885 Bova, who is so kind and generous and hosts teams from all over the country to compete, and this year, during that competition, we have some hometown pride to share. A local Westland residence team was selected as the Michigan representative for the World Championship BBQ down in Lynchburg, Tennessee, at the Jack Daniels World Championships, so very proud of Buddy Hammett, and shiggin ain't easy, so go Westland, go Buddy, and go shiggin'. You know, and that competition also, what's unique about it is it's become a launch point, so we've had teams that have started out as backyard cookers and then professional cookers, and now they're vendors. So, our recent winner of the People's Choice Award at the Blues Brews and Barbecues event, Hogs BBQ, used to be one of our teams that competed, and we're very happy to see them moving on and bringing wonderful food to the surrounding cities. So, this Thursday, our farmer's market is still in action, it's the Health and Wellness, or Health and Fitness, is the theme this Thursday, and following the farmer's market is the second Hot Country Nights presented by our DDA, and that is going to feature Georgia Need with special guest, the Audrey Ray Band, and we're just, you know, again, we talked about the DDA earlier and what they've done for Blues Brews and with our chamber, but the DDA presents these concert events, and they're free, so bring a lawn chair and enjoy it, and hopefully the weather will cooperate with us. And then, you know, additionally, there's just so many things going on in the city. You know, put a reminder on your calendars for September 10th and 11th, 'cause we're gonna have some garage sales, our citywide garage sales coming up, and, you know, I think it's really important that we recognize, Ray talked about mental health, Councilman McDermott mentioned it, we talked about STEP and them being able to purchase some land from the Wayne Westland Community School District for maintaining the STEP program. But one of the other unique things that are happening in our community is our police department is hosting a Day for You on September 17th, and this is a special day that they put aside for those who maybe have sensory issues or mobility issues, but especially the sensory issues, and our police department's really gone above and beyond to make sure that they're accommodating to all folks, and so they're gonna have special tours that you can come and visit the patrol cars and the areas, but without the lights and the sirens, but then later they'll have some with the lights and sirens as well, so if you're interested in that, you can check out our website, but you can also leave an email with M. Kelly at, I think it's WLPD.org com? Dot net. There we go. So, I think that's just fantastic. I don't think there's a lot of communities that go out of their way to make sure that all people are represented and given an opportunity to do something that so many children enjoyed doing. So, with that, I will say goodnight and see you soon. We have Labor Day coming up, so our next meeting won't be on Monday, it'll be on a Tuesday, and I hope you enjoy your Labor Day weekend and stay safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Murkowski. I'll go to Councilman Hersberg now. One second.
Londo, I'll also be briefed tonight. I just wanna give a quick plug for the Fill the Boot Drive that's gonna be August 26th through the 28th. Our Westland firefighters will be out in the intersection of Ford and Wayne Road, raising money for charity, and I know there was some talk at the state or the county level, I can't remember, about maybe not allowing that in prior years, so I'm glad they're still able to do it, but I just wanna remind everybody to drive safely and for you guys to be safe as well, and good luck with the event. I also just wanna give a quick plug, the Westland Historic Village Park is doing a trolley tour around a lot of historical sites throughout the city. That'll be on September 10th. You can get tickets online, or you can go to the Historical Park on Saturdays and buy tickets there. They're gonna be going to several different historical locations. You'll be able to tour the Perrinville Schoolhouse, they're gonna go to the Malcolm X House, among many other locations, so if anybody's interested in that, I would check them out on Facebook at the Westland Historic Village Park. And then, lastly, I'll just wish Ray a very happy birthday coming this Sunday.
All set. Councilwoman Sampe?
Thank you. A lot of what I wanted to talk about, it's actually rare, has been covered, so now I know how it feels to be last, but I'll touch on just a few things. So, I hope everyone's having a great summer, it's really great seeing, you know, some new faces that we don't see here at council meetings. I think the mayor did touch on this, but I was there this morning at the groundbreaking, and I think it was really exciting, very exciting. My colleagues, Council President Protam, Michael Londo, he was out there, Councilman Godbout, and then Councilman Mike McDermott with his dog, Jetta, so I'm happy to see you guys out there. It took place this morning, and we're hoping that by the end of the year, we will have the dog park up and running from what it sounds like, so stay tuned for more information, but it was a great morning in having my colleagues out there. And thank you to the Westland Rotary Club for your support and donation to this project. I just wanted to thank you publicly, because groups like this really help fund projects, and it's really great to see that we have the community involvement. I did also want to plug the Fill a Boot, that was on my list as well, too, so I will be out there, please be safe, gentlemen, when you're out at the intersections at Wayne and Ford. I know that it's a very worthy charity, so do you guys have a time that you're gonna be out there?
We usually start around 9:00. We try to do two-hour shifts.
Okay. Is it all day? Okay. So, those of you at home that are watching, so please try to drive by and fill the boot starting at 9:00 AM. Also, on the consent calendar, we have the adoption of the Prepared Resolution for the Senior Resource Center, so I know Barb is here, I wanted to give a plug. Barb does a phenomenal job at our Friendship Center, just with senior programming, she keeps us updated, so they're gonna have some much-needed renovations and security camera updates, so I just wanted to kinda put that out there, that we're continuously putting money back in our community, and, you know, Barb, I know you're gonna do a great job with the rehab of, you know, everything that's needed over there. Again, I wanted to congratulate all the new businesses. I have been able to attend the ribbon cuttings, and I'll tell you what, a lot of these business owners are first-time business owners, and they're choosing Westland, so please feel free to go out and support those businesses, we don't wanna lose them. Again, they are opening, grand openings are happening often, so we definitely wanna keep our business local, so continue to support those businesses, and I often try to stay in Westland as much as possible when I decide to go out. I am looking forward to a Day for You, so I know that Officer Kelly does a great job in addition to the other officers that put on events, say, was at the Driver Safety, you guys did a phenomenal job, and that is a very worthy event, especially those with disabilities, to have that sensory, and I think we did talk about this before with Officer Yu, but that sensory day for them to not be overstimulated, it's really important, so I'm really happy that you guys are doing it, and I'll be sharing information out on my Facebook page. I just wanted to give a shout-out and thank you to for Blues Brews, the mayor and the Westland Administration, if you were out there, you saw them, all the directors working very, very, very hard, all of the volunteers, the various organizations, the smiles on their faces, you guys were out there and you were making sure that everyone was safe, the DPS team was working hard, fire, police, you guys were out there. Kyle Mulligan, the Parks Director, was out there with the park rangers who were out very late. I was like the last one to leave on one of the days, and he was still there. I think he had to tell, alright, let's go, but I was talking to him just about the excitement, and the fireworks show was amazing, the drone show was amazing, so just wanted to thank you. And then, Councilman Godbout, thank you for, you know, your volunteer support, too, so that was a very important part of it, and Terry Packer and Vic Baur, too, for everything that you did for making the event a huge success. So, Ray, thank you for coming up here again, talking about mental health. I appreciate all your updates, and we stay in touch all the time. I hope you have a great birthday on Sunday and do something special for yourself. Awesome. So, with that being said, I invite the residents to come out and join us at the next meeting. I thought our next meeting was the 29th of August?
Study session.
No? Okay, all right. So, after, good bringing that up.
September 5th.
September 5th, okay. So, everyone have, everyone have a great holiday. We'll see you in two weeks, or no, we'll see you in three weeks now. Be safe and kind, and we'll see you soon.
Thank you, Councilwoman Sampe. Councilman Godbout?
Thanks. I know we're gonna be, meeting or having all of the volunteer groups and organizations come up, but in regards to Blues Brews and Barbecue, but I just wanted to take a minute to thank all of the volunteers and all of the groups that participated. This event would not be possible without all of the volunteers that step up and put in hours of work at this two-day event, so once again, we'll be recognizing them at an upcoming meeting, but just wanted to take a brief moment to thank them personally for that, as well as, since she's here this evening, I wanted to thank Barb for all of the work that she did with the decorations, the plants that were put on the property. It was noticed by very many, and you set up that section for the volunteers to go sit in with the benches and the plants around. I can't tell you the number of volunteers that thought that was great and really appreciated someplace to go and just take a break for a few minutes, so thanks, Barb, for putting all that together. And Ray, happy birthday on Sunday, and I also wanted to congratulate my colleague, Peter Hersberg, on the birth of his daughter. Congratulations. That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilman Godbout. I'll start off by thanking Councilwoman Murkowski for leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance tonight. Happy birthday to Ray, it's coming up. Now I know what President Hart goes through, everything I had on my list, all the flyers I had in front of me have been touched on, so I, right? I'll be very quick, I promise I'll be very quick. So, a lot of things I wanted to cover already got covered, but, you know, I see the firefighters out here, I appreciate them continuously doing the Fill the Boot campaign for the MDA. It's been a longstanding tradition for Local 1279, and the MDA is an established and vetted charity, so please get out and support them on August 26th, 27th, and 28th at the corner of Wayne and Ford Road. I'm glad Mr. Spiezak's still here, I didn't say it while you were up there, but you mentioned, the last time you were here was when, 1978? I'm gonna age myself, that's how, I was, no, that's when I was born, and that's the year Councilman Godbout was married, so I always remember that, but thank you for coming out again. Thank you to the Clerk's Office and all the election workers that had a very successful day, I didn't hear of any issues in the city of Westland. Westland was the gold standard as far as getting results in, I think we had them in by about 9:40, before 10:00, 10:00 PM, I believe, but I talked to some other people that were running in various cities, and they weren't getting results until late. I mean, Dearborn Heights had a power outage, can you imagine if we had a power outage? It was ugly, so thank you so much to the Clerk's Office and all the election workers that work on those, and also thank you, and thank you for all the candidates that stepped up to run. Congratulations to all those that were successful, and for those that weren't successful, I hope you'll stay at it. It's not an easy thing to do to run for public office, but appreciate those that do step up. I won't belabor the point on Blues Brews and Barbecue, but I echo everything everyone said, it's an incredible event. The drone show and the fireworks show are the talk of the town, I mean, it's just incredible, every year it gets bigger and better, and Thornet Davis, mayor, I've seen her probably three times, I mean, this year, for some reason, she was just amazing. I think she's been amazing every year, but I just, I guess I wasn't paying attention 'cause I was always busy working, but I really sat and watched her for a while, and she was fantastic, so thank you for bringing her back. Thank you to all the volunteers and incredible sponsors that continue to support this event and make it a free event every year. The All-American BBQ Cook Off was touched on, which was over at the VFW Hall in Bova, that used to be over at Tatten Park, and the event outgrew itself, so now it's over at the VFW Hall on Hicks Road, and that's also an incredible event, it brings people in from all over the country and Canada. I was able to participate on Friday night in the judging of the turkey smoke and rib burn, so I got my fair share of some good barbecue, now I can't ever go to any other restaurant around, 'cause it won't, it won't compete with what we had there, so. Lastly, I'll just update the upcoming study sessions that council was noticed on, Monday, next Monday, the 22nd, we'll have Priority Waste here to talk about service issues that we had in the past and some of the corrective actions that they've taken since these service issues, and then if mayor could send a note on the recycling, I'll have that added as well. And then the following Monday, on August 29th, we'll have a lengthy discussion on the marijuana business ordinance update, that was on tonight's agenda, which would probably be on the following agenda after that, so. At this time, the chair will entertain a motion adjourned.
Support.
Motion by Councilwoman Murkowski, supported by Councilwoman Sampe. We're adjourned.